Okay, good afternoon. I want to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everybody today on this stormy afternoon, but after today maybe we'll enjoy the springtime a little bit. At this time, I'd call on Commissioner Doc Odom for our invocation and then our pledge of allegiance.
Merciful and loving God, we thank you for your unconditional love for us. We praise you and thank you for all the good things in life that you have given us. Lord, we pray today for those in need. We pray for those who don't know you. We pray for peace and understanding and love for our brothers and sisters wherever they may be. Lord, now we pray for your guidance in these proceedings. And we pray in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any items that anyone would like to add to the agenda? Okay, um, motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye. Um, any comments, additions, corrections, changes to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Lena, public comments? No one signed up today? Okay, alright. Well, our next item is the public hearing, but that will take place at 6:00 PM. So we'll move on into new business. And our first item of business will be the approval of fiscal year 2015-16 Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Annual County Plan. Ms. Pam Glover, if you would share information with us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board. Hope everyone's doing well. You have in front of you our county plan decision for funding of the different programs that apply. And as you will see, that we are funding the same programs that we had last year, except for one, which is communities and schools. Are there any questions or comments up to the funding? We know that.
One thing I noticed, there's Maggie's Outreach Mentoring Program that's on here, and that was also in our budget workshop on our list of nonprofits requesting funding.
Yes.
What do they do?
They actually, they do a mentoring program. The children, the youth that they serve are all court referred. And they actually focus a lot on parent involvement as well. So they actually do workshops. It's an afternoon program, so they actually work with the young people Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 6:00. And they also have workshops for the parents, improving parental skills, and they work with them trying to deter them from juvenile delinquency. So it is like, it is a mentoring program. I think one of their biggest assets, they have that parent involvement piece. And they're located right on Woodland Avenue, where that old big brick city.
You have a rather large board, I think.
Yes, sir, we do.
Yeah, I noticed that. How good is the attendance for a quorum? How often do you meet?
We meet monthly, except for we do not meet in June, July, and August, and we do not meet in December. As you can see, for the fiscal year from the July up until last month, we had quarms except for twice. Two months we did not have a quorum. Other than that, attendance has actually improved over the year, last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have one additional comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, she said communities and schools, and am I missing it in this list? Or I don't see that mentioned here.
I think it was removed.
It was removed, yes.
And there's a reason for...
It is, and the only reason for that is that because Communities and Schools was funded, it was their first year applied for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Funds was last fiscal year, and they only served the youth at Sand Lee Middle School. And all the other programs that we're funding serve all of the youth in Lee County. And so that was their only reason for not funding.
Okay. We've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, revisions to Lee County Transportation Title VI Plan. Debbie Davis. Aye. Good afternoon.
I am bringing back to you all the Title VI Plan, which is a plan under Title VI and the federal regulations, but I'm not going to go into all those numbers because even I don't understand them. But we have to, because we get federal funding for the county blue transit system in our federal compliance audit that we had back in December, a Title VI Plan with certain components is required. And I worked with our county attorney, I worked with our HR director, and we discovered that these plans just pretty much are not out there for a county. So in the process of writing it, we managed to put something together, and you all approved what was basically a draft, but also approved what was good enough for us to get through our federal compliance audit in December. But from there, it went to the North Carolina Department of Transportation Office of Equal Opportunity and Workforce Services in Raleigh. So once they saw it, there was four deficiencies, and you all have on page 58 the deficiency report. The first one was the Title VI policy statement is incorrect. Their correction was basically protocol. I had listed Sid Morgan as the transit coordinator to be our Title VI coordinator for the county. Because I'm the director over the overall agency, I have to be named, or my position has to be the coordinator of the Title VI Plan for the transit system. So that's in your packet to approve a new statement with my name on it. Then they wanted the Title VI minutes from our board meeting. I had not sent those in because I sent the plan before we actually met in November. So that will go to them, as well as the Transportation Advisory Board minutes from January and this coming Thursday. So we'll meet that. The public information policy, they wanted more detail on the community involvement and how we handle public hearings and our public comments section and those types. So I sent that. It was approved upon the first revision that I sent. And then came the Language Efficiency Plan. And what this states is, I had to actually conduct what's called a four-factor analysis. Don Kavaskas worked with me on this. And we had to come up with the demographics in the county of how many individuals spoke languages other than English, and also had to determine how well they spoke those languages. Any language spoken that had individuals 5% or below of our population, we did not have to account for in the policy. Any of those that did speak more than any population more than 5%, we had to address it in the policy, which of course for us is Spanish. So after about three revisions, sending it up to Mr. Banks, who worked very closely and was very patient with me, I finally bring before you a plan that he has approved. Now, we're going to have to do some surveys, and I'm pleased to announce we actually have a bilingual employee through vocational rehab working in the Colts offices now, which we will have her for six to eight months probably. But if you have questions, I told our county manager, I'm not even sure I fully understand all of the regulations and everything, but all I know is I have this email that says it's great, and I take it for approval. That's my main thing.
That's what we shoot for.
That's what I was shooting for.
I move to approve by its counter of the transit system Title VI policy as presented.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I got one on that. Some of the things that they call deficiencies are simple things that by email or phone you say, change the name, and just eliminate that. The other question I really have is, what do they do with the information once we gather it? Who do they disseminate it to, or do you have any ideas?
Well, actually now I have to review this every time we have a Transportation Advisory Board meeting. They want us to put out surveys, which there's one over here today under Title VI that I doubt will get filled out, but it's there for the public involvement section. And we have to, I, there's a section, if you're reading that LEP, the Language Efficiency Plan, there's a little section there where I actually have the survey in there now that we, we do an annual survey with the Colts anyway. So I will now be adding a sheet of that to the plan, to the survey that's a part of this plan that includes, we'll have to try to reach out to the Hispanic, Latino community more than what we have in the past. Churches, the faith community.
I understand why we do it.
Oh, I don't know.
We're trying to, I want to know what they do with it.
I have Christians number, Mr. Banks, which honestly, I'm not sure.
Call and ask him.
It goes as a part of the compliance.
Just call and ask him sometimes. Say, what do you do with it? Sometimes.
Well, we have to review it every three years now, and I have to bring it back to you all. I'm not really sure. I honestly don't know what they do with it. I mean, I guess they put it in a folder, and then they bring it out when it's time for me to review it and tell me what needs to be updated and what doesn't. It meets the criteria in the compliance federal audit.
Any other questions or comments? Got a motion on the floor to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, changes to the FYI 2015-16 Agreement between NC Department of Health and Human Services and the Lee County Health Department. Ms. Carol Thompson?
Aye. Good afternoon.
Good evening. How are you?
All right.
I'm filling in for Mr. Jones. Okay, we have brought to you this evening the changes for the FYI 15-16 Consolidated Agreement between the Lee County Health Department and the Ohio Department of Health and Human Services. Our Board of Health has approved these changes at the March 11, 2015 meeting. As you can see, some of the dates requirements have changed of when the action plans will be submitted and the SOTR report is submitted. I guess you guys got these in your packet, right? Okay. Are there any questions?
It outlines six changes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, and then in paragraph, Section A, Paragraph 16, Directions for Discontinuance of obstetrics care management, OBCM, or Care Coordination for Children, CC4C programs, which tells us if we do not want to provide these programs any longer, that we have to give a six-day ready notice to the state. And Section C, Paragraph 5A, change to help reporting shall be completed to the aid to county database, which is the WORM, which tells us we have to claim general aid to county funds, state funds, fees, Title 19, and local funding for teen pregnancy, and temporary food establishment fees as well. Section D, Paragraph 4, compliance with E-Verify. Section L clarifies which records are covered by the state's record retention policy, and we are to keep the consolidated agreement, agreement addendums, any budget amendments for five years or longer depending on when the audit has passed. And then attachment A requirements in the event of disclosure of the OBCM and CC4C program.
You might want to tell them what the WORM is.
Oh, I'm sorry. The WORM, the WORM is web-based.
Scary sounding from the Health Department.
I apologize. The WORM is a web identity reporting management system, and we, every month I'll go in for expenditures that we have spent for the month, and I go and report it into the WORM and let them know how much money I'm drawing down for the state, which allocation is still left for me to draw down, and our local fees, and our Title 19, and the county appropriations.
So it's a string back and forth between us and the state?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Thank you. I was thinking about tequila.
Oh, no. No, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Andre, you want to add anything?
No.
I'm sorry about...
I just moved it.
Okay. But basically, this is just sort of housekeeping, kind of just crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, and just for public information, you know, we could lose, the way I interpret it was $871,000 in state funds if we don't make these changes. Okay.
If we do not agree to these changes, send the agreement in. They can hold our funding till we decide to send it in, so.
Understood. But basically, just getting our homework done.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the resolution authorizing sale of property located at 1213 Crest Street. And this is our attorney, Ms. Smith.
Yes, we received an offer to purchase property at 1213 Crest Street for the amount in taxes and fees owed on it, which is $9,177.86. Ms. Linda Ware made the offer. She also paid for the advertising if the board approves the offer. There is a typo on the abstract sheet. This is not actually, we're at the sale portion of this process yet. We're at the beginning, where the board needs to consider accepting the offer and then direct staff to advertise.
And then if it goes out to bid?
And then it goes out to bid. We advertise on Friday, and then it will, the 10-day upset bid process will start.
Okay. Any questions?
So, sir, appraised value on this property?
Okay. It's, um...
Okay. Sorry, ma'am.
That's okay. I just think I remembered that that was asked the last time, so I brought it with me. It's $36,700 is the tax replacement.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, all those in, able for further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Okay, the enterprise agreement for Microsoft Software Licensing. Mr. Kyle Edwards.
Afternoon Chair Del Rappel.
Good afternoon.
Members of the board.
I will have to admit that reading this, I was lost fairly quickly.
It's very light reading for Friday night, you know, when you've got nothing else to do. Every three years, we, I bring to you this agreement so that we can enter into another three-year agreement with Microsoft for enterprise licensing agreement. It basically covers, in short, the licensing for our desktop servers, applications, just the whole gamut of what we use across the county. Gives us a much more flexible pricing structure and adds a lot of benefits on top of that with training and vouchers, direct support from Microsoft, and things like that.
We're pretty much stuck.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, any comments or questions from anybody? Kyle, how, I mean, are they, are you satisfied with, you know, their response when you have difficulties and...
Very fortunately, the way that Microsoft has it structured there is kind of a liaison between Microsoft and us, and that is the one thing we do have flexibility over. So we can choose at any time to drop that liaison and find one we are satisfied with. So we're actually, the one we're using right now is CompuCom out of Charlotte. They've been extremely helpful. Anytime we have an issue, we go directly with them.
Okay.
And they, they take care of whatever's going on.
So you, you can change that anytime during the three-year contract?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Chair, I believe that the approved agreement for Microsoft Software License is presented.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And then I think you're up next.
I am.
The network cabling bid for the buggy factory project.
Yes, ma'am, for the buggy factory network cabling project. We sent that out for bid, I believe it was in February, and so we've received all these bids back, and we are recommending North Carolina Communications Incorporated to you as the lowest responsible bidder.
Have you ever used them before?
We have not used them before directly, no, no, sir. They have several excellent references that have reported back very positively.
Are you comfortable with the, the information or response that you got back?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The entity from the state side that organizes the bid project, they have used them on several occasions and are very, have been very satisfied with them.
What kind of timeline to complete this project? Ever do?
We're looking at roughly a month, a little over a month.
And that's basically after, when, when does this happen, Kyle, just for...
So these guys will want to come in either right before the electrician finishes or right after the electrician finishes. So they'll probably start sometime around July.
Okay.
And then they'll, you know, a month, month and a half, they'll be done.
Don't mind my asking, how frequently are you going over to that building? I see that there's a lot of activity taking place around that.
Once we get a little closer to the structure cabling, more than likely I'll be over there once or twice a week just to make sure that they're doing what they say they're going to be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Kyle? Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that we have a question for Kyle.
All, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay.
I just want to commend you on your cameras. That was good work.
Thank you. Yeah, that, we're very, very pleased with that because of that.
That was a good test. Thank you. The cameras work.
Yes, they do. They do.
Hopefully, once the word gets out about them and more people realize that, that'll be even more of a deterrent.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, considered a loan to the St. Burleigh County Airport Authority, and I guess that's Mr. Crumpton.
Yes, ma'am. I get to handle this one. I tried the best I could to get the chair here today, but he is tied up on a project, which is normal for what he does for a living. So I told him I would take care of this today. I'm handing out the latest grant agreement that was offered to the Airport Authority on the taxiway rehabilitation widening and general aviation apron expansion. And you'll notice that the local funds have gone up. The apron expansion was something that they decided to fund, and that was badly needed for the flying club. We have a lot of planes that at this point kind of sitting out in the grass and that kind of thing. So this will give the airport more tie-down space. So it raised the match from, for each party, from $190,000 to $225,000. So we're seeking short-term loans from the city and the county for $450,000. And so we'll split that between the city and the county at $225,000.
And just for clarification, this is a loan?
This is a loan.
And, and are we still talking about 12 months at 3% interest?
Yes, ma'am. Now, our finance officer would like for us to check market rates before we, you know, we have to bring the agreement back to the board anyway, so right now this is just to seek approval, to put the agreements together, and then bring the final agreement back to the board on May 4th. But the finance officer would like to have closer to 3.5%. So I have to tell you, I have a conflict of interest.
Yes, ma'am.
I am the treasurer of the Airport Authority, so I have a dual role.
So a few roles.
We will see.
Much pleasure for you.
That's the loan form again? It's, we're total borrowing $450,000 for the match.
Is it from the county?
It's $225,000.
So it's different than what's on here?
Yes, sir. And it's, and it's because of the award is higher, and we have bids in hand, so.
I see the numbers are different.
So I hand, yes, sir. And the airport is, is, is growing, and, you know, having to expand is a good thing. But we had, you know, we pretty much depleted the fund on the runway rehabilitation project that was done last year, so.
I ask you this, you haven't agreed on the rate of the interest yet?
No, sir.
So I can make a motion that we proceed with this and y'all discuss?
Subject to market rate.
Right.
And that's what we're going to seek is a market rate for tax-exempt financing.
Well, I, I move that we do that.
Okay, further discussion?
I'm opposed to, to this, but I just have a question. Have we done this in the past?
Yes, sir. We have loaned money to the Airport Authority since I've been here, this is the third time. And it's a good investment because we own the city and the county, to us, we're basically paying ourselves, and, and we're getting good, a good interest amount. We're, you know, the idle funds that we have right now, we're getting around 75 basis points or less right now on our investments. So if we can get 325 basis points or, you know, it's a pretty good investment for us. And, and the Airport Authority is working on a longer-term loan to build T-hangers and consolidate some debt and, and do some other things. So it's a lot of growth out there, and we're, we're moving.
So it's really good for our...
There's a lot of economic development going on out there. The forestry service will be out there in July, and when they occur, when they come on, on the airport, we expect a lot of fuel sales to be going, going on, so.
And these funds from the city and the county are actually a match?
That's correct.
I mean, it's, it's a much larger project, but...
It's 4.4 million.
Right.
Total projects.
So for the $450,000 from the city and the county, they get the $4.4 million project?
So when I go to buy gas out there, can I get a discount?
No, sir.
I don't think your car will run that high, too.
Yes, it does. It does.
Sir, I don't, I don't think you want to pay the abgas fees that we have out there.
The airport, CCC.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion on the floor to, oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot one question.
Yes, sir.
Who normally does the, the work from a construction standpoint? Local contract?
Well, we bid, and we've had some local bidders, but the last contract went to, oh, I can't remember the name of...
You were at Wake County.
Yes.
Yeah, they were at Wake County.
I'll think of it just a little bit.
On this side, bid.
They also did Clyde Ryan Road, but Triangle Paving, Sanford Contractors, or ST Wooten.
Yeah.
Sanford Contractors, we have a little issue with them bidding right now since Donnie's on this board, so they haven't bid in a while.
Any other discussion? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thanks, John.
Thank you all. Airport Authority, thanks, sir.
We'll let Lisa take it from here.
Yeah, before you, Budget Amendment Number 13 for this fiscal year. This budget amendment affects the solid waste fund, and it's appropriating additional $13,000 from fund balance into tire disposal fees. We apparently had a very large tire cleanup earlier in the year, and so they are running out of funds for that. So they've asked us to appropriate $13,000 more dollars into that line item. Mr. Cherry is here to answer any questions you may have about that that I cannot answer.
So was this like at one site, or was this tires collected over an area, or...
The cleanup, which is causing the budget amendment, was one site.
We used, because of that cleanup, we used almost, oh, about forty-seven percent of our budget for the year just to clean up that one site.
Was this a business? I mean, I, I don't want to get, but I mean-
I don't know specifically if it was a business. It was, it was a privately-owned property-
Okay.
That had, was just loaded with tires that would, had been dumped there throughout the year. And they asked us to, um, pay for the disposal, which is what the state gives us that money for, is for the disposal of tires. And still, even with the thirteen thousand, it's still within keeping with the money that the state gives us every year.
Okay.
So is there any retribution to the property owner or?
Well, they actually cleaned it up, so I don't, I don't know that it was, that, that they dumped the tires there.
They cleaned it up and we paid for the disposal, is that the way it works?
Yeah, correct. And if you go over the amount that the state gives you, they will reimburse you for the tire cleanup. But we didn't go over the amount that they give us for the year.
So this is actually a reimbursement?
Right. In other words, we've gotten funds in previous years and we've got ex, you know, that's rolled over into your fund balance.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And then moving on to Ms. Mentor's, the monthly financial report.
Right, you have before you the monthly financial report for March two thousand and fifteen. As always, I'm going to remind you that sales tax run three month, three months behind, so do not be alarmed when you see they're only at fifty-some percent. As far as property taxes go, we are running about four point four eight percent behind last year. Again, we think that's attributable to the change to the tax and tax system in last fiscal year and the fact that we had doubling and an increased collection percentage that we could not budget for during that year. So we think we're okay as far as current year tax collections go. Sales tax revenues through December have been posted, and as I told you at the last meeting, we were looking fairly well through December. We're at approximately fifty-two, almost fifty-three percent of our budget figure. Restricted intergovernmental revenues are running about one point eight four percent behind last year. That is attributable to the large amount of revenue that was budgeted for the Colts vans reimbursements, and those have not come in yet, so we have not received that funding. Those probably will not come in until next fiscal year.
I'm sorry, how, how much hypothetically, and I don't mean to pitch on the spot, so, but if, if we had that reimbursement, how would that change that line? I mean, ballpark, I mean-
We would probably be ahead of where we were last year just because of that large sum of money. Because there were quite a few vans posted this year. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but it would put us ahead of where we were last year, but then it's still relative as far as the budget goes.
Right, right, okay, please.
Um, yeah, because our budget is about one point two million higher than it was this, for last year, and a lot of that is the Colts vans.
Deviance, mhm, thank you.
Let's see. Okay, as far as expenditures go, we should be at, um, around the seventy-five percent mark or below. Most of our departments are there. There are still a few running ahead of that, being the governing body, IT. And as I've mentioned, juvenile detention, I am holding off on doing the budget amount, budget amendment for juvenile detention to get a better handle on how much we may need to put in there, but we are looking at a large amount. We will probably need to go from at least fifty thousand to probably ninety thousand in that line item. So we're probably looking at anywhere from a forty to fifty thousand dollar budget amendment. Any other questions on the expenditure, um, monthly financial report? I'll move to sales tax. If not, you have on page one forty-eight, the report that shows the sales tax collections through January twenty fifteen. As you can see, we did drop off a good bit from December, that is the norm. But then, if you look on page one four, one fif- forty-nine, you will see that we typically do drop in the month of January back down from December. But as you can see, we have had one of the best Januaries that we've had in the last five to six years down there. So while it's disheartening to see it come down, it is the norm, and yet we're still seem to be doing well. We're tracking ahead of budget in most every category. If you go to page one fifty, you will see that across the county, we've seen about seven point six eight percent growth in sales tax. As far as Lee County goes, Article forty-six really kind of shows the best how Lee County's doing, and we're seeing about a six percent increase in our Article forty-six collection. So we are actually seeing the best growth in sales tax that we've seen in the last few years. We just hope that that will continue as more stores open down at this other end of the county.
Yes.
Well, I'd go ahead, and February and March were not good months for sales tax, based on weather and some other things, so. It'll probably go back the other way for the, for that quarter, but who knows? With everything opening in April and May around here, things might become a big, big year.
I'll be answering questions you may have, no? Thank you very much.
Record speed.
I know, right? Well, we'll, we'll slow it down a little bit here, have some more discussion maybe.
Well, not on, not on my report is, I need to introduce Daniel Mahoney. Danielle is back here. Daniel, will you stand up? She is our new ICMA NCACC intern fellow, and today is her first day, so she's getting ready to leave us. She has two more, three more weeks at NC State in the NPA program, and she'll graduate from there. So we have another intern, another support, more support from ICMA and the association, so this is a great program for us. We're having her working with us, so.
We'd like to welcome Danielle. I got to meet her for the first time earlier today. Glad to have you with us.
She's looking forward to getting up to that podium and talking to y'all.
It, it'll happen sooner than you think.
I'll make sure of that.
Um, but glad to have you.
Thank you.
Very glad to have you.
Go ahead and give you an update on Sandley Park. We have reviewed the RFQ submittals and had interviews with actually four. We decided to interview four of the folks that submitted. We had eight RFQs submitted. And our little committee is supposed to get together this week and make a recommendation to y'all on which firm to hire. Very impressive group of folks, very difficult decision that we're gonna have to make. The demolition bids, the packages are ready. We are advertising and hopefully we'll have those back in a couple of weeks, once again, ready. It may not be the fourth, but it'll definitely be the twentieth at the latest to get that demolition started. We seem to be ready to go ahead and put a resolution before the board May fourth recognizing the Eagle Scouts who've performed projects here in Lee County, so I think we have a pretty good list. I'm not sure that it's all-inclusive, but we've given everybody the opportunity and, so, but we do have a long list of folks that have done projects for not just the, our parks, but schools as well, so thought we would put them on the list as well. Just a quick budget update, you know, from the weekend, we had, I thought we had a good discussion about the budget on Saturday. We're working towards having the budget ready for the May eighteenth meeting, so that's kind of the update there. I talked with Gaynell about getting our summer session together. We have some conferences and some other things we're trying to work around. And so we typically only meet once in July, August, and September. And I think we have the July date already set for July thirteenth. If there are any conflicts with August or September dates, if we were to meet the, the second or third Monday, please let us know, otherwise we'll be letting you know May fourth what that schedule's gonna be. I see a bunch, I see Andre checking his calendar.
Yeah, that's what we're doing too, um, well, um. I, I- My suggestion would be just to do maybe- We're gonna meet on the thirteenth of July. So I would say maybe either the third or the tenth of August. Rather than wait till the seventeenth, but you wind up having five Mondays in August. So you can meet the seventeenth, which would technically be our second meeting. But that would be exactly a month from our meeting in July, which, I mean, what's everybody's preference?
Just one?
Just one, the tenth or the seventeenth.
Is the seventeenth okay with everybody? Does that make, does that help you, John, so that, you know, it's not too close but not too far away?
No, that's actually the, um, the tenth or the seventeenth works well because I'm out of school.
Okay. I wouldn't want to wait till the twenty-fourth because then that just, that's too close.
That's too late.
And school starts the next day, so I probably could be scrambling with my two, trying to get them ready for the next day.
And then in September, the first Monday is Labor Day. The second Monday is, even though it's, doesn't start on that Monday, but it is Lee County Fair Week.
Wow.
And so we may be better off doing it the twenty-first.
Okay, well, um, we, um. How about tentatively, let's look at August the seventeenth. And September twenty-first. And. I'm sure some of you have to do like me and check with family when you get home and everybody else's calendars. And, and then let Gaynell know, you know, by the next meeting, is that okay? Right, right. Let me get with you tomorrow and coordinate and see if that'll work. Okay? All right, John, I'm going back, um, to the Sandley Park. Um, just for my own, not- Who's, who's on the committee?
The staff committee? Uh, I have Lisa Mentor, John Payne, and Russell Spidey.
Okay.
Reviewing the RFQs.
Okay. Does, does Steve Godfrey wait in? Has he, has he given you kind of some ideas or?
As far as-
Or is he just going, going through John Payne?
Whoever we pick as RFQ, you know, will, will obviously work very closely with Steve on the design of the building, you know, and had the key features of the building, but, um, you know, Steve has not been involved in the review of the architects.
Um.
You did sign the OT Sloan letter for the survey, for the master plan complex survey. And I did meet with Kyle this afternoon, and that's probably why he ran out of here, because I asked him to have it up by five o'clock today.
Okay, I'll have to take-
Hopefully it'll be on our website, and hopefully we can get folks to fill out the survey on what they would like to see in a multi-sports complex. So I have not filled out the survey yet. I haven't looked at it. I'm a bad, bad manager, but I will do mine before next Friday, week of Friday.
Well, and that's one of the things too, and, and take a little privilege with Ms. Crogdon down there, you know, if, if people could be reminded that that survey is on the city website and also hopefully by five o'clock this afternoon will be on the county website. And it, it is very important. It is the OT Sloan Sports Complex. And we have a consultant firm, I guess, for lack of a better word, that's helping us-
They are.
To, to, um, contrive a plan that best meets the needs of the citizens of Lee County, rather than just saying, okay, we're gonna build seven baseball fields and four soccer fields and, you know, eighteen bathrooms, you know, nine men, nine women, and a concession stand or whatever, you know, I'm just picking that out of the air. That's not been talked about, but just, you know, we need to hear from the public. What do you want it to look like? And if we don't hear from the public, you know, then we don't, so we want it to be as, as best suited to the needs of our citizens as it possibly can be. It is funded through the bond issue that was passed through the city bonds. So we definitely, um, you know, I know the city wants to, to spend the money wisely and, and to address those needs and concerns of the citizens, so definitely, you know, county citizens, you know, and I'm one, we definitely use the city facilities and OT Sloan seems like we're out there all the time, so for one activity or another. So the county residents' input is just as important. So I really encourage people to take the five or ten minutes to go on our website, find that survey and, and fill it out. It sure will help us get, get something that not only will, I think, be a great asset, but will meet the needs of your family. Um, okay, any, anything else?
County Assembly Day, May sixth.
Yes, and I think I'm the only one signed up to go. Sure would love a buddy, so if anybody's able to, you're gonna go? Okay, awesome, okay. The dynamic, do they? But yeah, as, as many, the more the merrier. So if anybody else would like to come along as we, um, uh, go to Raleigh and listen to, I believe, um, uh-
Moore Amberger.
Moore Amberger are gonna speak to our group and, and then, um, uh, we'll go visit our representatives and knock on a few other doors if we can. It's always a great day. Hopefully the weather will cooperate, so we look forward to that. Um, okay, commissioner comments? Start with you, okay?
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing is just a reminder that, uh, Mr. Holland that lives out off of Farrell Road did extend an invitation to all the commissioners to, uh, come visit his farm as a response to the coal ash. And, uh, Mr. Reeves and I have already talked, and so it's open to everyone, so if you're interested, let me know. I'm gonna try to set up a time.
You need to get the time settled.
Yeah, so same here, same here. We may have to do it in shifts though, if there's gonna be more than three of us. Doc?
Well, um, I think I need to inform the board, we're gonna have an executive meeting, the, uh, economic development board Wednesday, and I will try my best to come back and answer some questions for y'all at the next meeting. Maybe I can ask them before then if you all want to call them individually. The other thing I got is, I've talked to John about this, uh, and I felt like he might be here tonight, but I got a call from this gentleman about this, uh, out on Triple Lakes Road. And I just thought maybe if y'all could give him an update on where we are there and what's going on, maybe I can update him.
I know that everybody's been out there to take a look at it. This is a burned-out, uh, mobile home that's out there. Comes back to, you know, go ahead, Marshall.
Yeah, I could give you a little bit of update. Commissioner, Chris Riggins actually spoke to me this morning about that property. And inspections, building inspections is out there, and they're gonna take a look at it. And we're gonna see what we can do to get that cleaned up, and we'll follow through, but we're, we're definitely take a look at that piece of property.
How about filling the rest of his in on what the problem is?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know, other than I know it's a burned-out mobile home. Um, and that's the extent I can tell you. It's definitely a building inspections issue, and they're taking a look at it to see what they can do. My understanding is there seems to be some concern that the, either the property owners or somebody's out there taking it down in pieces and continuing to burn it, um, which is also a problem. So they're, they're gonna see what they can do to address that situation.
What road does it connect with? I'm just trying to get a-
Again, Mr. Reeves, I apologize, I don't know the details.
Anybody know?
It's, it's not actually on Triple, uh, Triple Lakes Road, it's just off of Triple Lakes Road, it's, um, Orchard Road.
I don't have a clue where the Lakes are.
It's, it's on Orchard Road off of Triple Lakes.
Where's Triple H from?
Triple Lakes.
Triple H.
Lakes, Lakes.
Yeah, it's right off of Key George.
I know where that, I know.
Triple Lakes.
I kept saying some other crazy name.
They were saying Triple H.
I did too, I thought it was a horse farm.
Hey, we were trying to-
I don't, my understanding was that he felt like it was interfering, trying, he's starting to sell some property and he felt like it was interfering.
It's an eyesore.
Yeah, I know where that area is.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Doc?
Okay, Robert?
Back to the, uh, website about the complex. If, if county citizens come up with a different format or need, what is that, do you go back to a? For example, if you got baseball and soccer and volleyball, swimming, and they come up with a different request,
Mm-hmm.
how is that gonna work? Do you just submit it, if you get a significant number of people interested in whatever it might be, is that submitted to the city for consideration, or how do we handle it?
Well, we have the joint committee, um, between the city and the county, and it will be followed back through those, that committee.
Right.
Alright, yeah.
And then we'll get back to the two boards with it.
Right, right.
When we, when you open doors like that sometimes, it.
Sure. But I, but I think, you know, I, I got an email from the mayor, um, last night, and, um, they have had over three hundred responses from city residents off their website. But the consultant firm, um, they want at least five hundred to have a good sample set, but, I mean, they'd love to have a thousand or, you know, two thousand. You know, when you look at the amount of families that use our park system, um, and we don't wanna duplicate efforts and be redundant in the type of park facilities we have. And I think we all have talked, you know, um, here before about how we see this as potentially being an economic development tool, bringing people into the county with tournaments and competitions, that kinda thing. Um, what we have talked about in the past is, um, you know, all the information, it's really not gonna be divided between what the city wants and what the county wants. It's really gonna be what's best for the citizens as a whole and what they want, and move forward from there.
But there's always that city-county struggle that comes up.
Sure.
And the other question on that sports complex, is there any way on the website that we can sort of draw Sandley Park as an attachment, you understand what I'm saying?
Maybe like a link to it?
We can, like, put a, the master plan picture on there so people can take a look at it?
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Yes. Mm-hmm, we can do that.
Alright.
Okay.
I'll get Don and Kyle to put that together.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to, just to highlight or lift up, um, Michael Crumpton.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I saw his name in the, in the Sanford-Hurle a few days ago, and identified him as part of the project at Horton Park and doing some construction of the dugout and some other areas and the, and I just think that we need to lift that up tonight as a, a, a great project. And his dad, I think that his dad knows some of us on this board, and so I thought that we need to.
That's what we're gonna do May fourth, aren't we?
Yeah, looking, looking forward to that.
Yes, he's on the list for May fourth.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
But I thought it was a good write-up, and I thought it was really a, 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 a good time or, or a wonderful time for us to lift his name up here at the board, on the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Frieser.
Um, okay, well, I'll try to wrap things up, uh, before our closed session or break. Um, first of all, um, wanna thank everybody here, um, Kirk's not here, but, um, hi- him as well, uh, for being at our retreat, for putting up with me on Friday night and Saturday from ten to two. Uh, we missed Ricky, but he was answering to a much higher calling than me. Uh, and, and, um, uh, and, and we understand, and, and, uh, we'll, he and I will get together and, and get him up to speed. Um, but also, um, thank Danielle and Carrie and John for being there as well, and for Kyle with the technical support to get things started, although it just fell apart when I tried to put my video up there at the end, so no surprise there. Um, but I think everybody was fine with that, cause we got finished a little bit early. Yeah, um, but, but it was a good retreat, we appreciate Catherine, uh, being there from the paper and, and tolerating us too, and, and, and giving up her weekend. Um, I was, yes, yes, uh, Susan Conlon came on Friday night and, and gave us a clear and kinda concerning picture of the future of extension, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll, yes, we'll, we'll see what we can do, um, unfortunately, um, cuts to that program over the last eight years have been really difficult, and will continue to be that way for the foreseeable future, I'm afraid, but we'll try to figure out some things so our citizens, you know, don't take such a hit with the loss of those services from extension. Um, uh, for those that were able to get out to Broadway our way on Saturday, I did catch the second half of it, and, um, commend the mayor of Broadway and, and his, uh, board and all the volunteers that put that together, and oh man, what a phenomenal day. The weather was perfect, uh, I missed the barbecue, which probably was better for my health, I always overeat, but, um, they said that was stellar as usual, um, and it was just packed when I got there Saturday afternoon, so just a great day. Um, appreciate that event in the county. Um, I was asked today to remind people that the new stoplight at the intersection of Nash Street and Kelly Drive, there at the high school, Lee County High School, um, right there at the Civic Center, is now operational. There's, you know, we get used to driving those roads, you know, all our lives, and just even though it's a big stoplight there, um, it was on flash for a couple of weeks, but they're still seeing some folks really not aware, um, that that light is operational, so please, um, be mindful of that. And, um, to wrap up my comments, John and Danielle and I went to, um, a meeting at CCCC this morning with the Building and Grounds Committee, um, uh, just a little update where they are on the bonds for the, um, four different projects with CCCC. Taylor Hobbs, the architect, gave a brief presentation, um, right now, he calls it, um, they're in the pre-design phase. Um, they're, they've been working on it for a couple of months now, um, but they're wrapping up the design, the programming, and the pricing for each of the four projects. He hopes, he hopes, um, to be finished up by the end of May, um, with, with all of that, so that they can begin to start, um, the bid process and, and further plans, so they're, they're, they're moving right along. The vet med, um, renovation and expansion is doing quite well in that phase. Um, there are a couple of concerns with the emergency training center. Um, I, I think fencing costs were more than they anticipated, um, versus some other needs, but, but they're, you know, they're, they're trying to balance, as always, with projects like this, the needs versus the cost, and prioritize those. Um, the Civic Center, there's some issues with expanding the Civic Center and having to bring certain things up to code, and maybe some additional costs there, but again, um, uh, Mr. Hobbs, he impressed me as far as his ability to think outside the box, and some of his ideas that he shared with Building and Grounds Committee, um, that, that, um.
Who was that?
Taylor Hobbs, that's their architect, um, he is out of Pittsboro, Pittsboro.
Who was that? North Carolina?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and he's a really impressive young man, he's, he, he, he very imaginative and, um, has some creative solutions, um, for some of the issues that they talked about today.
His dad wasn't in Southern Pines, was it?
Uh, no, no.
No.
Same, I'm saying group.
No, no, I had the same question. Um, and the health sciences building, again, you know, kinda balancing some of the needs versus the cost, because medical facilities, even if their classrooms are very expensive. Um, Andre can probably definitely speak to that because of some of the training, uh, um, equipment that you need. Um, but it was a good meeting, um, and, and learned a lot, and they are moving full steam ahead on the CCCC project, so that's a good thing. Be another good economic engine for the county. Um, so that's all I have. Um, now, turn that over to.
I move that we go into closed session to consult with the attorney to protect the, the, uh, attorney-client privilege for North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three.
Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Good evening, we'll call the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting back into open session, and, um, at this time, we are going to conduct, um, public hearings, and Ms. Effie Thompson, she'll guide us through, please ma'am, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair, Board of Commissioners. Tonight, we will be holding public hearings on another set of text amendments that was discussed with the Joint Planning Commission in last, uh, on last August. The JPC recommends the amendments be forwarded to each jurisdiction for public hearings and adoption. Just to mention, a public information meeting was held on the first two amendments that we will discuss tonight. Um, we held this meeting with the developers and citizens of the community to better advise them of the proposed changes. The First Amendment is to Article ten, Section ten point seven, Design Standards for Non-Residential Development Along Fairfares and Freeways. Section ten point seven of the Unified Development Ordinance regulates new non-residential development along our major fairfares and highways. It provides minimum standards for the exterior design and appearance for new buildings. The proposed changes will create separate sections and standards for commercial and industrial uses along our corridors. As proposed, the current Section ten point seven will now apply only to commercial developments. The current standards of this section will remain the same with the exception of a few minor clarifications. The section title will be renamed to ten point seven, Design Standards for Commercial Development Along Fairfares and Freeways. Also, as proposed, a new Section ten point eight will be added for Design Standards for Industrial Development Along Fairfare and Freeways. The purpose of this Section ten point eight is to provide a regulatory tool that will assist in ensuring that future industrial development or redevelopments that are located along the fairfare maintain a minimum level of quality in design. The standards within this section require specific design elements that will promote a consistent, attractive appearance along our corridors. Are there any questions?
Questions? Do we just go into all three? Do, do we need to vote on them separately? I mean, not very, but it's, I mean, it's, we're just, right, 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 I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Carrie, should we hold them separately?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you wanna close, close the first one?
Okay, any comments from?
Clear.
Yeah. Go, open the hearing, any comments for the changes?
Let me ask you, I've got a question.
Hmm?
When, when we're making these changes, does our new saga, Economic Development Board, are they getting copies of what y'all did, Marshall?
Matt, here.
Yes.
Um, yes, sir, and I mean, not detail, we're not soliciting detailed comments, but we're certainly making them aware of what we're doing, and we've had numerous conversations with them about the UDO and how we can integrate into some of the things that they're trying to do. I will tell you specifically, it relates to this, the intent of this is really to make the standards easier for industrial development, and I don't mean to say less quality. What I'm trying to say is, over the ten years that we've had, more or less, the standards in place for non-residential, it's worked really well for our commercial product, our retail product. Um, but what we found in interacting with staff and our theater place speakers, better than you and I, uh, we found where industrial or large wholesalers are looking at is either, uh, new sites or sites where they're trying to convert, some of the design standards in place that we have now are really for smaller scale type products, and it really put kind of a financial or fiscal burden on those folks. So what we've tried to do is update and create two different categories, one for, uh, retail and one for industrial, have some of the same standards. I mean, we do expect, you know, some minimum level design, so you're not just getting a plain building out there, but at the same time, we're trying to provide breaks for them, because it is a larger type site. So hopefully that, hope that clarifies a little bit.
Sure, I would ask that, since they have a person in leadership, that they sort of check off and just acknowledge the fact that they are being copied and have taken a look at it, so that this board doesn't run into a problem down the road saying we, had we known, we'd have been in front of you or something.
And we certainly can do that, we can simply add, uh, we, I could talk, discuss it with your Mr. Solos and find out who would like to send it to.
Solos, right.
I, I think it's a good idea, it's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any for?
That over here.
Okay, any against the proposed changes? Okay, public hearing closed on amendments Article ten revisions. Okay. Um, Article eight?
Thank you, Chair. The Second Amendment is to Article eight, Off-Street Parking and Private Driveway Standards, subsection eight point two point six, Having Required. This amendment also relates to the new industrial standards that we just spoke of, and it will relax the general design standards for off-street parking areas for industrial development. As proposed, the amendment will add a new Item C to allow the parking for all uses in the land use subheading industrial and manufacturing uses and the wholesale trade use out of the general sales or service, service category. It will allow these uses to construct and maintain a gravel surface if the required parking is located to the side or rear of the development site.
Any questions or comments?
I just forgot, I would like to clarify one thing, this is gonna be a future down the road, cause we got some area people now that I guess are grandfathers.
Yes.
That have, so, they're not gonna be required to come under this.
Um, nonetheless, they do have substantial addition or redevelopment of the site.
Right. Right, but as long as they maintain the existing business and they have a gravel parking lot, they're gonna, okay.
Yes, that'd be okay.
Anything else from the board? Okay, I'll open the public hearing for, um, the text amendments for Article eight, anyone like to speak for? Or against? Okay, close the public hearing for the amendments for Article eight and amendment to Article four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Last Amendment, number three, is to Article four, Section four point twelve, Historic Preservation Overlay District, and to subsection four point twelve point seven. This proposed amendment addresses inappropriate vehicle parking on front lawns in the Rose Mount McKeva Park Historic District. The amendment will prohibit parking of vehicles on grass, dirt, or similar erodible surfaces. Subsection four point twelve point seven title will be renamed to Section four point twelve point seven, Off-Street Parking, and standards will be added specifically for parking requirements in the Rose Mount McKeva Park Historic District. I would like to add that a citizen input meeting. I would like to add that a sys- citizen input meeting was held with the property owners um, of this, uh, Historic District in January and, uh, it has been discussed with them. Also, we have done a survey to get a ideal of how many properties that will have to be, um, upgraded, the parking areas will have to be, um, improved. The Joint Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission recommends approval of this amendment.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, I'd like to know again why it's being restricted to historic preservation area.
It is.
Some other areas of town running.
No, I'm looking, I'm sorry, Althea, I'm looking at the map here on Charlotte Ave. There's this one place that is wall-to-wall cars and trucks. It's incredible, it's right there on the street campus every time I drive by.
I understand. Um, right now, it's just for this small area, um, that is just to the west of us here. Um, and and it could be used as a test run to see how this proposal is gonna be implemented.
You didn't see Marshall's.
It started small, if you will, yeah, to see how.
Okay.
That's a good way for to figure, all right, that's a test run.
Just, you know, for curiosity sake, how how well attended was the meeting?
We sent out, uh, we did a lot of, uh, notifications, um, separate Facebook, newspaper, letters, postcards to approximately one hundred and sixty property owners. Five residents attended the meeting.
I'm sorry, that that.
And that, that's fine, we're still working with them all. Uh, we we've already contacted some and some have already started to make improvement.
Okay.
I will add one comment, I'm sorry, I'll be, um, one of the things I've asked staff, particularly our historic preservation planners, since it was only affecting the HPC or Historic Preservation Commission District, is I had them go out and the ones that we knew may be affected by this, we actually went out and contacted those folks and made them aware. This was coming and they delayed, the city's already looked at this and they had recommended a delayed effective date. And so, that's gonna allow these folks to, if they want to, if they choose to, they'll actually be able to bring their property up to a, to a standard that would basically meet the standards of the Swiss requirement, but it wouldn't be the same fiscal impact as if they had to do it after, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, it does.
So, we're kinda letting folks have a choice.
Okay.
What actually do you take if they don't comply within a time, certain time?
Um, it would be a zoning violation and we would just go through like we would any other zoning violation. There would be a due process and ultimately you would end in likely fines and that kind of process. Eventually, we'd end up in court if, worst case scenario.
So, the only, 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 I see mopheads and everything is restricted, is that correct? Only thing but bicycles?
Yes, they they need to be, um, they should be parked on an approved driveway. Yes, within an approved driveway.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I opened the hearing for the amended changes to Article Four. All, anyone in favor? Anyone choose to speak against? Okay, close the public hearing for Article Four amendments. Okay, thank you, Planning Board, for all your hard work. Thank you very much. Have a good rest of the week. Safe travels home tonight. Well, no, I know, but. Okay, well, been nice hanging out, but I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.